Welcome everybody to the Zoning Board June 6th, 2023. My name is Marty Aikens. I'm the Chair, Sir Vice Chair, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Hemel, Mr. Chen, Mr. O'Brien, our Clerk, Mrs. Noonan, and the Director of Inspection Services, Mr. Collins. If you have a cellphone, could you please put it on silent, not to interrupt the meeting?
I'm so proud of that one.
What, no pager?
Yes.
Always in a decade.
I've said it for so many years.
I know, but I...
For so many meetings, I go back to like 70s.
Yeah, you've been good.
One thing we gotta do here is...
Both.
No, I have a... My net. Before your old business, we got move a...
Oh, we moved it.
CPA 2338.
ZBA 28.
Where do you want that thing?
What do we have on meeting days?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see what...
That's busy.
You're both busy, but why don't we do on...
Yep. ZBA 2338. What was the name of that? JCBT Architect for a variance to build two and a half story addition with a two car garage on the basement level of the premises numbered 28 Furness Court Parkway Quincy. Make a motion to move that to 711.
711. On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so move. Oh, business, ZBA 23...
2223.
2323, right?
Yep.
Oh, huh. 573 Washington Street LLC for variance and special permit to demolish the existing building, construct a three-story, 15-unit residential building with commercial statement for this law in the form of number 573 Washington Street. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for hearing this evening. My name is Rob Fleming, Attorney with Fleming &amp; Fleming. I do represent the applicant here, 573 Washington Street LLC. Minvan, Jim Chen are managers of the LLC. With me this evening, Chi Man. You all know Chi from Hardy Man Design Group. He is our civil engineer. Jim Chen is the architect. He's here as well, so they'll do a quick presentation with you this evening. So again, 573 to 580, 585 Washington Street is a property that contains 17,000, roughly 782 square feet of land in a Business B zoning district, currently improved by a single-story commercial office building. In fact, that's where Jim Chen, our architect, operates his architectural firm out of that building now. This property is located, as the board knows, in one of the gateways into the city of Quincy on Washington Street. It's on the corner of Washington and Chubbuck Street in Quincy Point. Which that whole area, really down right into Quincy Center, has a large presence of commercial retail as well as residential uses. The proposal before this board this evening, which is again designed by JCBT Architects' Jim Chen of Quincy, is to demolish the existing office building, construct one three-story building containing 15 residential units on the second and third floors of the proposed building with ground-level commercial space totaling roughly 2,100 square feet. The new proposal will provide for parking under the building off of Chubbuck. The entrance to the parking is off of Chubbuck and not Washington, to accommodate 32 parking spaces. This will also allow for drive-up, drop-off pickup for mail packages and rides as well in today's environment. The proposed building obviously will be centered on the parcel, which it is not today, and will front obviously both Chubbuck and Washington Street. As this board knows, a project of this size did require us to appear before the planning board for site plan review as well, which we have done. That took a number of months, so there wasn't one hearing. We had originally come before that board with a smaller difference in number of units, a little bit higher, based on board concerns with different things. We did accommodate that and less units with the 15 today, which they found was reasonable. We were able to push the building back further off of Washington as well, to provide a little bit of landscape on Washington, which they appreciated as well. And we did provide some interior garage, sidewalk, and entrances to the retail, commercial component from garage as well. So that took a number of months. As this board knows, that review process is very thorough. We did a full traffic study. Ellie Rule, our traffic engineer in the city of Quincy, looked at this as well. She was satisfied with our responses to any comments she had. Civil as well. We did some improvements there and addressed those concerns with both city as well as my peer review consultants. So we're here this evening, as this board knows, for some relief. One is a special permit by this board for the residential use in a Business B zoning district. So we do need a special permit for this use, the mixed, the mixed use. And variances for sub-dimensional. Not a lot, slight, you know, requests for some variances concerning some of the dimensional requirements. If the board has any questions for me specifically before I turn it over to you, I think I'll let Chi...
So you have two. You have 30 spaces for the residential units?
It's gonna be deeded for the residential.
32 spaces. So we'll have a deeded space.
Single space.
A single space for each of the units.
Okay.
These may be rentals, but each unit will be provided one space.
What do you mean maybe? I thought we had a project here building. What did we build?
It's a condominium.
Condo.
Excuse me. It is condominium, so those will be deeded, a deeded space.
Single unit deeded.
For each unit.
Correct. And there are two bedroom units, so...
They're two bedrooms.
All two bedroom units.
That's correct. Yep.
And one parking space per unit?
No, there's an excess of that. You know, there is a mixed-use component.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Where are these people gonna park and where are the people in the units gonna park?
Okay, so again, so again, we have, this came up...
If it's a condo, I think a guy who wants two spaces is gonna buy a condo.
You're absolutely right. And so this came up with planning as well. And so what we did with the mixed-use component, we have a whole parking management plan, which I submitted with the application as well. It's kind of a color plan, where there's gonna be some restrictions on some of these spaces.
During the day or something?
During the day, correct. You know, so when residents are coming back home in the evening, there's gonna be that number of available spaces, so...
What do you got for square footage on commercial space?
We have, it says two, two commercial units.
Okay.
Totaling 2,100. One, I think, is eight?
800 square.
800 square feet, the other, where Jim will operate his firm out of, will be in the larger space, which is roughly almost 13.
So looking at this, it looks like you have a lot more commercial space than 2,800 square feet. Am I wrong?
2,100.
2,100 square.
No, so you, because you have this component here.
Parking.
And then entryway?
Entryway, and then smaller, smaller here.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, so you basically have a, so you have a professional office building, which is gonna be Jim's, and that's, you know, you don't have a lot of foot traffic during the day, so then the 800 square foot space, whatever that...
Whatever that may be.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we, we, we're actually meeting the parking requirement for both the residential, with the 32.
Yeah.
We're meeting both the residential requirement as well as the, we used retail space, and retail requires more parking. So we were, we were subject to that.
Okay.
And we meet it with the 32 spaces.
All right. And the parking, that's what I wanna hear. I wanna hear when the hours are for the parking, how they park.
Yep.
And I, and I remember reading this whole thing before.
Yeah, so you'll see there's designated spaces for the residential.
Yeah.
And then there's spaces that will be sort of commercial and residential at different hours.
Right, but what time? What time? You mean at 5 o'clock, you're gonna turn that into a residential?
That's correct.
Nine to five.
That's correct.
At 5 o'clock?
At 5 o'clock, yep.
Okay.
Is there any on-street parking in front of it?
No.
Not right there, but that's where it gets a little bit narrow.
Right.
Not narrow, I mean, still two lanes, but a little bit narrow.
And so that was important when we started the whole process. You know, you have to look at where you're actually developing. There is no available parking off-site, you know, so we wanted to provide as much as we could onsite.
Height is?
40 feet.
33.
33?
33.
33 feet to the, to the top of the roof, and we're having sort of a four and a tile feature. To this height is 40 feet.
Cool. And how far back are you pushed off?
So along Washington Street is 10.4 feet setback, and then on this side is close to 10.
What's that current sidewalk, like four, five?
Current sidewalk at this side, very minimal. We have a, probably 8, 10 feet.
Okay, good.
And again, the entrance to, the egress to the parking is off Chubbuck.
Both, entrance and e...
Both, yes.
One way in, one way out? Nothing on the street, right? Nothing on Washington, right?
That's right.
Perfect.
No.
That's all I got.
Anyone else?
Too bad you couldn't have bought that two family in the back there, knocked that down, but more parking in.
Yeah.
There's another one on the other side.
There's always, there's always attempts that are made, but it's hard sometimes.
They won't see the sun till 3:30 in the afternoon.
You have a question? A question on the transition on the commercial parking to residential. How's that gonna be enforced and is it, is it gonna be with good faith?
So this is gonna be, well, obviously, I mean, Jim's office is gonna be there. He's the manager, you know, and, and he'll, he'll be there onsite. There's rules and regulations, they're gonna have to be enforced by, by the association of when people can park and when they need to leave.
I think he's saying, is there gonna be signage there at 5 p.m.?
That's part of the whole manage, the parking management plan. On that plan, there will be a lot of signage, and that's how it's typically handled, is signage. And then obviously, it has to be enforced as well.
So when the people get a deeded parking space, for example?
Yep.
It's gonna come with restrictions that they can't park or certain hour?
Well, the rest of the 15 residential, it's gonna be, you're gonna be allowed to park there anytime you want.
Okay.
It's more in the commercial end, where each, each of these two tenants are gonna be advised, you know, no longer parking in those particular spaces that are marked for both. You know, so you gotta clear cars out of there at 5 o'clock.
And then they're gonna be taken over by residents?
By the residences, correct. Yep.
Interesting.
And a good, and some don't wanna believe it, but on average, you're looking between one and one and a half spaces per unit is what the demand is today.
But, but, yes, the house don't help nobody when they get too crowded.
No, it doesn't, but on average, it's about one and a half spaces per unit, you know?
Complicated question. 15 spaces go deeded to the condo owner.
Right.
You're gonna preserve the other spaces? Are they gonna be available for sale for a condo owner if you wanted to purchase one? Or you're gonna only go 17?
They will, no, they're gonna have to be separate, because they're gonna be, they're gonna be more or less shared with the, with the, with the commercial component. You know, it's gonna have time restrictions on.
The remaining 17 will be up for grabs.
Jim, correct? I think there's, there's a number of shared, which is the purple and the green.
Shared by who?
And, that's the commercial, yeah. And then there's a number of just plain shared as well. You know, some, some are gonna have time restrictions, you know, between the commercial and the residential, that they're gonna have to, the commercial, 5 o'clock, they're gonna have to move any cars that are in those particular spaces.
But at 9 o'clock in the morning, you're gonna move your car out of that spot because...
As a resident.
As a resident, too.
Look, it happens all over Boston.
Oh, no, no, I just, I just wanted to clarify what they were gonna do.
I know.
Talk about growing up.
No, it's a good question, no, it is.
They were gonna be, some of them were gonna be sold.
I think we need more parking because the streets are just jammed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, but you look at, so if you're gonna say that, then you'd have to say that, that, you know, you cannot park on the street, period, if you own a house, and like you have to pull your car into a stack parking.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. This is a commercial street, and it's a main drag, and there's no place to park now.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, like, we, we drive up and down, we drive up and down streets when there's a snow emergency and there's no cars on the street. You drive up and down that street in the middle of the summer, and everybody's parked on the street. Why? Because it's easy, and there's nobody towing, there's nobody, that's up to the city council to go and redesign a parking plan that actually addresses the concerns of what happens with parking.
Well, I also think it's up to us to make sure that there's plenty of parking for residents buying condos.
There's plenty of parking, they just need to pull into their driveways, they just won't.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking...
You have 32 parking spots.
Yeah, and at 7:00 in the morning, all of a sudden, you're sick that day, you gotta go move your car.
Move your car.
How do you gain access to the parking areas restricted? You have a pass key, it will be a gate, or is it just open?
It's...
You're gonna cost them money.
Does it deede the parking?
Again, design now is just open. You know, planning, you know, sometimes they would like some type of gate, you know, but I don't think it'd work here, because it's gonna also be for the deliveries as well, you know?
Is Chubbuck Street restricted? Restricted parking? Restricted parking, yes. Up to, up to this side?
Yeah.
Parking's like on this, right here.
Yeah, closer.
No parking adjacent to where you have built.
Yeah, closer than light, I think, yeah.
After you go by your building, the parking's like, like two hours or three hours.
No, there's no, there's no signage.
No signage.
No signage.
Huh?
There's no signage, none.
No, okay, I missed that.
Yep.
This is not...
Thank you.
You know, so obviously, this was reviewed civilly as well, you know, with drainage and those things, and both by city officials as well as peer review consultants. So I'm happy to have Chi come and present, if you would like.
I would.
You would, okay, great.
The recommended achievement for Hardy Man Design Group, civil engineers on this project. So this is the, this is the site plan showing the buildings and the parking area, this is ground floor retail space. So we will be moving on sidewalk along the frontage all the way around Chubbuck and Washington Street with funky sidewalk, adjust any curvings and close up all the old curvings, like full kerbs, two, two grand curve. And also, look at, it's gonna be a pool of any cabs that across Washington Street and Chubbuck Street. Right now, they, they will meet A D compliance, so definitely need that to meet A D compliance. Advise the Brooklyn structure, kind of color-coded, plan. So we're gonna be tying into the city center system on Washington Street, cut the encapping existing sewer connections. It's gonna be a new water service on Washington Street as well, it's with six-inch Tactile pipe, and that's great to, to pipe and capture domestic water. It's gonna be a transformer on the Chubbuck Street side to get the underground community from existing pole and go to the chemical room, which is kind of under the, on the first row. The building itself is slab on grade, and the building line basically come up to this paint line here, so the space in the back here is open here. So entire roof, they're going to collect by the runoff, will collect by the internal roof drain, and that's going to be connected into an underground negotiation system, which is consists of three by five, which is 15 of the Kowtchak system. We have test pit done on the site. Soil condition, basically, disused before we, like, roll houses along Washington Street here. Test pit show is a layer of the top soil with pretty much old foundations and so forth, but underneath that, when we come down to certain depth, it's 74 inches start, and 60 inches start from here, is very corset, you know, so it's gonna be infiltrating the water really fast on the roof. The open air portion of the parking lot is gonna catch by the catch facing, and we have designed a storm septic, which is going to be pulled by stormwater treatment. TSS removal and fossil removal before they go into the filtration system. And cap conditions show we are pretty much capturing almost the entire site, except for, you know, the front area that's gonna drain off to the curb line. But we do have a drain connection, that's why imagine the overall. So that's kind of some of our Brooklyn structures of all this building. Yes, surface is gonna be coming off on Chubbuck Street.
I wanna hear about the building itself, the apartments, and what's in there, and what are you putting for...
Jim Chen, our architect, is here as well, so he can certainly present.
I can show you the good side and how the building looks like.
Might as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Chen, Architect. So on the, on the ground level, these two commercial buildings, two commercial units, and then on the second floor, we have a total of seven units on the second floor, range above, it's all two beds, two bath, ranging from 950 to like 1,100 square feet. One of the space we're dedicating to a lounge space on the second floor. And then on the third floor, we have a manser booth-type structure. That is also a duplication of what's beneath that, total of eight units, similar size, 950 to 1,100 square feet, all two beds. So in total, 15 units, two beds, two bath. Central quarter serving the front and the back units, two, two set of stairs on the end, either end of the building. And a service elevator that goes up to all floors.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
Did you ever look at making the commercial units on the first floor residential?
No.
Okay. So hypothetically, we can put two units there, right? So then we'd have 18 total with 32 parking spots, parking wouldn't change.
Correct.
Correct. Did we ever look at making the whole entire first floor park?
We have.
Okay. So you could get how many additional parking spots? Five?
Those would be tenant parking.
No, 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 I mean, if we made the entire first floor, we raised the whole second floor, it's just residential only, how many parking spots could we potentially get there?
Then not, those, those won't be legal parkings?
It'll be tenant parking?
No, 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 I think you misunderstood. So I, I remove the commercial space.
Yeah.
Hypothetically, I remove that space.
All garage, it was all garage.
It was all garage. How many additional parking spots do you think I fit? Five?
Well, if we do a tenant park, it'll be the whole entire road.
Oh, so I do tandem. Yeah, sorry, sorry, I thought you said tenant, sorry, my bad.
Tandem.
So if I did tandem, so you'd have a whole nother road, they'd each get tandem parking, and we know that tandem parking doesn't work, because people don't do it in their own driveways, let alone in an apartment complex or condo. All right. And if, and if we pushed all those to the front, maybe I get five on the right side or something, you know, like, well, four, you know, in that kind of...
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's deep enough.
I don't think it's deep enough.
It's not deep enough down parking.
I gotta remove, I gotta remove four of those, you know, or two of those on that side, so now I got, I can come in this way and get, you know, five additional spots, I think maybe, total. I'd be lucky to get five additional. So I, I mean, I just, I bet you designed it well, I like the look of the building, I just don't, look, I know what, what the problems are gonna be, it's always parking in the city. I think that hearing what you just said, there's, like, the alternatives aren't better, you know? Unless we get rid of, you know, two, three units, that's the only way to make it look better, and I just don't, I don't see the value in that personally. So I like, I like what you did.
Thank you.
What's the front of the building? What, what are you putting on the facade?
So the, on the ground level, we have majority of perimeters on the ground level, along with storefront windows indoors. And then on the second floor, party lap sightings, 17 slap sightings. And third floor is just, the answer group of asphalt shingles.
Any question?
Okay.
No questions.
Thank you. Does there anyone wanna speak in favor? Does anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call?
Yeah, I'll give it a quick one. Sorry.
Don't apologize.
John Waterfield, 62 Grand Mall Road. The reason I like this is this is a good example of squeezing a lot of new growth and not a huge lot. So we do need the new growth, and, you know, it is weird, you say that, like, you know, who would move here? People who wanna park aren't gonna wanna move here. So there are these new people coming to Quincy who don't drive, you know, who don't, you know, I'm sure there are gonna be people who are gonna park on the street, get their cars towed from this place, because you can't park on the street there. But I don't think this is a bad project, simply because of the new growth. I, I love the new growth. I think we're gonna get like eight, nine million dollars worth of new taxes out of this property, and, you know, the only way, like you were saying before, if there was maybe like no commercial stuff there. So the commercial stuff that is in there, I don't think many people are gonna go to JCBT Architects. I think that is a perfect tenant. If they can find another tenant like that, it will be perfect, but whoever moves in there, let them move in there. But I am in favor of this because of the new growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone speak in favor? Call I, Paul, Aaron Coles, I got a letter here from the DPW. We reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
I have a council.
Closed, council?
That council.
Oh, there he is. He's all set. Let me see you back there.
I know, I'm all set for right now. I've repeated this conversation before. It seems like you gentlemen are on the right track, so.
And I feel to mention, the council was very helpful at the beginning of the whole process. We did have a neighborhood meeting as well. Thank you. I think we had one or two that actually appeared, it was through a Zoom, and so no, no real concern by, by the residents in the area.
Thank you.
Couple of councils, different councils.
I don't know, you know I feel bad about the people behind that building? They're screwed.
I get it.
I get it, it's growth, and you're gonna, and it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, I get it. And it's, that's all gonna be commercial, that whole thing sometime, but some of those residents are gonna stay in the end. Maybe he's gonna go up a floor to get some sun, I don't know, but...
It's 2,100 square feet of commercial space.
No, it is nothing, exactly.
It's nothing.
That, that doesn't bother me at all.
No, I mean, no.
I just feel bad for the people behind, you know, the way, the way it's designed, you know, they're screwed. That's, that's more screwed than that place. That's life, I guess. Comments?
Okay, it's a gateway to our city. We've done a lot of work on other gateways to our city. It's, it's not, it's on the edge of a neighborhood, we're trying to preserve neighborhoods.
I know.
I, I understand the parking consensus, it's a bus route.
No, I know.
It's growth. I, I don't think you're gonna see the, the issue that we kinda think we might see from parking. I just think that's the future, man. I like the project. I think they did a good job. I think it's well designed.
There was an article about a week ago, two weeks ago, in The Ledger, saying about the challenges between that part of Washington Street and going over the bridge in that section in Wayman, about how difficult it is to draw our development in.
Yeah, it is.
And, yeah, as much as I'd like to see more parking, I, I think I'm in favor of this.
Yep.
I'm in favor. Likewise.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2323, 573 Washington Street LLC for a variance and special permit to demolish the existing building and construct a three-story, 15-unit residential building with commercial space on the first level of the premise numbered 573 Washington Street Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance and special permit.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, some move.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jack.
Further on to tonight's agenda, new business, ZBA 20233. Israim Garcia for a variance to remove the existing depths on the rear hall home and construct a new two and a half story on the premises 198 Main Street. If, if you could, please, anyone gonna speak tonight, could you please raise your right hand? Mr. Chen, if you could, please.
George, if you wanna speak tonight...
If anyone's gonna speak tonight, please raise your right hand and take a note, if not, you won't be able to speak.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter of the hearing. Yes, thank you.
Name and address?
Good evening, everybody, and the, and the members of the jury, my name is Eastline, one ninety-eight Main Street Quincy. I am twenty-five years old, full-time at work, I'm a student and worker. I have, I'm the mother of a baby boy and a three-years-old girl. I'm also a foster parent, working with the CF to care with kids in needs and emergency situations.
If you could just slow down a little bit and speak up, people have to hear you in the back.
Alright, thank you. The reason, I purchased my home in two thousand and eighteen, I started working with the CF the same year I purchased my home. The reason for my request to permit is to add an extension to my home. The moment I have a back porch in each unit, in each one and two, that it's already in need of work. My home, it's a family home, my mother lives on the first floor, who is also a foster mom, and I live on the second floor. I have a two-bedroom on my floor, one which is very small, which is my daughter, can barely fit a taller bed, and the other one is a regular side bedroom. Since my family is growing, I'm in need of a space and a privacy for my kids and the foster kids I care for. I'm having, at the moment, I'm having difficulty caring for my foster kids due to space. If there's, for example, if there are siblings, I'm having to separate them and only be able to take, and take in one of them due to the space. My request is to convert the back porch of each unit into a room and connect it into my home. This project will be for the first and second floor. I'll be sure, my team and myself will be sure to follow any precautions and guidance to have a safe and satisfactory project. My project is estimated to take, to expect it to take from six to eight weeks. And that's what I have, any questions?
Just want so far, when the architect drew your plans, did they look at moving the addition over a little bit? Just because you're, when you get to the back rear corner, it's right on your neighbor's line, did they ever look to try and like offset it? Did you ever look at that?
We did, and he said it will be.
More money, yeah, okay, alright. And just because you have to, it just, it gets, it's really tight.
Yeah, it's a foot and a half.
Only a foot. Any other question?
Alright, I have the same issue, I marked over here, one point seven is very, very tight to the line and I don't usually approve things that are that close.
Yeah, I know, and then, I mean, the fire is way up there, and I, and I get it, it's just a weird lot. But, you know, it's, it's.
If, let me ask you, if that was all we were willing to consider?
I maybe to.
You'd move it over?
Yes.
Okay, so just, just want to throw that out there, though?
Yeah.
That, because it's already a small lot, it's already, you know, narrow in the back. So, look, we want to try and help you, but that might be, you gotta make sure we protect the neighborhood too.
What is, I think there's an issue there, anyway, why don't, why don't we just have her go back and?
Come up with those plans?
Yeah, come up with those plans, alright.
Can you ask him to draw that for you, so we can see it?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
And just try and come off that lot line on the back rear as much as he thinks he can, and make it work for you?
Okay.
You know, almost try and put it in the middle there, so, you know, I, I know it's gonna look a little funny. And it might feel a little weird that way, but, you know, it's just, it's, it's too close on that side.
Alright.
And let's just see what it looks like, let's, let's, let's have him draw it out and see what it looks like.
Is there any other issues there? The fire, is people okay with the fire?
I'm sure they don't.
And you guys are, you guys are both planning on maintaining the home for now, so it's just mom on the first floor and you on the second?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, if you could just have them just try and, try and scoot it over as far as you guys are comfortable and see what that looks like.
Alright.
That make sense? And then we'll have you come back and, when we can see those?
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
Three, seven, it's four seven here, July eleventh.
So what are we, that's an eleventh a month, you could do that, it's just a quick addition.
Oh, no, no, I'm not worried about it, I'm just saying we got seven, we got one more here and three.
We look at the pictures and see what it is, you know?
Yeah.
Is anybody here to speak?
Well, I'm not gonna let them, because it's not the project they're gonna see anyway, that wouldn't be fair to anybody.
Another question?
Yeah, yeah.
Just on the parking, she's got one space, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, and I have street parking. Yes.
It's a two-family, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And it is what it is, and they got one spot in it. I mean, yeah, that's why I'm asking if there's any more issues here, and the fire, fire is going up to point six on this building.
Fire, fire, most of the space?
Yeah.
It is, includes basement, I know, but it's point six.
Yeah, the, the side brackets are a little bigger, so parking wise.
Not so tight over there, I don't know.
There's nothing you can do, I, I mean, potentially if you get another one here.
Yeah, it should be another one right up front.
So you have the front left, right? Where's your parking now, front left of the house?
Yes, yes, yeah.
What's on the right, just?
At the driveway.
So the driveway is on your right, right now?
Yeah.
If I'm looking at your house, what's on?
On my right.
You hit this, that's.
Go down my left, go down my left.
What's on the right there, is there a retaining wall right there?
Yeah, that's the wall.
I mean, you could potentially try and get a spot up to it, yes.
Maybe.
It could.
Yeah, I mean, there's room, at least for a spot.
Maybe you can look and make another car, just.
Put a spot in on that right side as well, at least one? Just, we're just trying to get, you're making a big house, it's not for you guys, I get it, maybe only, you only have one driver now, today, or two. But what if you sell it, and you got four drivers now, you know, like now we have, just like we were just talking about those people, like, now we have more cars on the street. So look at that too, when, when he's drawing the plans, have him, try and put a parking spot on the right side as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chen? So there's a driveway marked on her drawing.
Yeah.
To the right.
It says it on the. But I thought it was on the left.
From the right, to the right of the front of the house.
It's to the right, alright, so, so we can pull one on the left.
Or you can go into the driveway and then turn right, you can get two spaces.
Two spaces on the left.
Yeah, so try and find at least two spaces.
Okay.
If you get, tell them when you're looking at it to try and find two spaces.
Okay.
Because it's, yeah, this is, this is, it is, it's a lot for, for one, that's like, there's a, uh. July eleventh, good? July eleventh, where?
Yes, it's time.
Alright.
I'll give you a month to get it, but you have to have it a week ahead of time.
Yeah, if you can get it to us a week ahead of time, so we can see the plans.
Alright, okay, thank you.
They're closing the third and the fourth, so.
Alright, thank you.
So if you bring them, yeah, it's gotta be done before that.
You have a question, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question, do you concern about the right side of the setback?
Yes, the back, right?
The center?
Where it's only a foot and a half off your line?
Yeah.
Just get it as much off that as we can, we can't have it a foot and a half, for many reasons, you know, it's just, it's not fair to your neighbor and, and, and fire reasons, you know, if they ever have to get the back corner of your house, so.
Yeah, there is space, so.
Yeah, if we can just scoot it over as much as you think you can.
Move it over.
Alright?
And find some parking space.
ZBA twenty-three, three, Islam Garcia for a variance to remove the existing decks on the rear of the home and construct a new two-story addition on the premise number one ninety-eight Main Street Quincy, and make a motion to move to seven eleven.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Close, some move. July eleventh, get him here like July first or something.
If you can.
For the four.
And if you need to, if you, for some reason it's gonna be delayed, just let, let her know, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further on to tonight's agenda, ZBA twenty-three, thirty, JBC Architect for variance to construct an addition on the existing second floor and finish the basement, six five seven Quincy Shore Drive, yep. Representative here.
Good evening, gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Chen, architect, for the record, five eighty-five Washington Street Quincy. So the subject property at six fifty-seven Quincy Shore Drive is in a residential B zoning district. It sits in a corner lot with approximately eight thousand five hundred twenty-five square feet of lot size. It's currently occupied by a two-family dwelling, a duplex style with unfinished basement. So the prop, the property owner is proposing to add a second floor addition by adding an additional one-bedroom, one-bath, and a larger living space. And also finishing the existing basement for the unit one. So the property is actually not in the flood zone, which will not require any kind of notice of intent with the conservation commission. The existing house currently has five bedrooms, two baths, with approximately nineteen hundred fifty-six square feet of living area. And we're proposing four thousand fifteen square feet, consisting eight bedrooms and four baths. Noted that this square footage also includes the finished basement space. The property has a waterfront view, so the property owner wanted to take advantage of the ocean view. So we're seeking variance for a maximum FAR allow in this, in the proposal, we have a zero point four seven FAR and the allow is zero point four zero.
Yep.
But other than that, we do meet all of the requirements, of the dimensional requirements. Actually, on site right now, it has five parkings, so sufficient for the, two garage parking and three on site.
And have eight bedrooms?
Currently it has five, and we're adding two in the basement and one additional on the second floor.
So is it?
Questions?
Single-family zone now, or is it two-family zone now?
It's occupied, it's two-family.
It's occupied, so basement's occupied as a separate unit right now?
No, basement is currently unfinished.
Basement's currently unfinished.
They want to finish that and add it to the unit one.
So, so that'll be unit one?
Unit one.
Which, and then today, it sits four bedrooms on that first floor?
Correct.
How many bedrooms will be on that first floor, three now?
Currently is.
Currently is four.
It will be four.
It will be three, put two in the basement.
Correct.
Second unit upstairs, which has?
Two bedrooms.
Which will have two. It's a lot of bedrooms on a single lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
And I get it, you have some space in the back and there's parking till the last parking be on the drive, that's a lot of bedrooms, my man.
Yeah.
But I have liked what they've done with the place over the last few years, they have cleaned it up really good.
Yeah.
I mean, the place was a disaster before.
I don't have any questions, I just think it's too big myself, I just think it's a little much.
Yeah, what's the, what's the need for the bedrooms in the basement as well?
You go way over to the fire, and the fire relief is like, too much of it, it's just too many bedrooms, way too big. But that, just not needed.
What's the, what's the reason for the two additional on the basement, I mean, it sounds like it's gonna be three separate units to me, you know?
No, no, the basement actually will be connected to the first floor.
I get it, but I'm just, you know what I'm saying, like, it's like, you put two bedrooms in a basement, but, like, I, I could understand if it was like a finished play area for a family, or, you know, like an office in a play area with twenty twenty-three, but it just seems like there's a lot of bedrooms.
Yeah, I can clarify, we're not on the whole.
Oh, this is actually the property owner.
Yeah.
Name and address, please?
David Chen, six five seven Quincy Shore Drive.
Did you take an Ls?
Uh, I did, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, basically, my wife and I just had a son, and right now the basement is unfinished, and our plan is basically to turn into like a playroom slash, basically a playroom, and then eventually, you know, of course, like guest bedrooms, because.
Family comes over, something like that.
Exactly, so it, it sounds like it's a four-bedroom on the first floor, but it's really actually like a two-bedroom, and then one of the bedroom we use as a dining room, one of the rooms we use as an office, so it's actually pretty small. So I know four-bedroom sounds like a lot, but it's really not.
But you're gonna have three bedrooms on there now, according to your plans on the first floor, and then you're gonna have one upstairs.
Two upstairs.
Yeah, we're gonna have two upstairs afterwards, right now there's only one, and then, you know, we use that to rent out, and then we just basically want the basement, which is unfinished currently, it's just like storage to be finished and be able to use that space, because it is actually a pretty small house.
If we said, yeah, don't put any bedrooms in the basement right now, I'll prove it, how would you feel about that?
Uh, I, I mean.
I mean, like, you could put a Murphy bed down there and draw it down when you have guests coming, and I wouldn't care, it's just, the implication of putting up two extra bedrooms in a basement tells me that you're gonna also rent the basement, and I know you're not, like, it's your house.
I mean, of course.
You have a beautiful view, it's, it's, it's the person you sell it to, you sell it to somebody, and all of a sudden we got an eight-bedroom house, you know, it's where you're using it for in-laws to come in, and your parents to come in, and friends and family, like, I get your use, it's the next use that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I guess, you know, that's what you said, that's, that's a fair compromise, it's just, you know, I, I guess I want to leave that option open to it.
Sure, no, no, and I get it, I get it.
Comments?
Yeah, this is too big, this is an apartment down there. I'm sorry, this is why I see it, too much.
I'd be okay with the addition, but not in favor of the bedrooms in the basement.
What about an open four?
Yeah, how about, how about just a finished basement instead of that?
A finished basement?
Yeah, finished basement, no, no bedrooms.
Yeah.
It's all walls.
All walls, maybe a bathroom or something?
There you go.
No, I mean, I have a bathroom in my facility, I don't want my kids to, I don't want them coming upstairs, I don't want to see them.
But I think the, based on the, the review of the letter, it said they were, they wanted to do this expansion because of the water views, taking advantage of the ocean views, I don't know if that's gonna happen from the basement.
Well, the additions are not.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah, I see, I, I, with this here, I see a future of B and B.
Yep.
You know?
Exactly.
I'd be definitely opposed to.
And it's, and it's business B, I mean, it's res B, so you could easily do.
Anywhere in it, anywhere.
Easy with five bed, eight bedrooms, of course, so.
I think I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly.
You have, you have a choice, I guess, to have a, just a plain finished basement with no bedrooms, which would be on your deed. And you have an addition that you can put up.
Yep, yeah, I'll take that.
Alright, so we're, we're down a.
Five beds. Seven, six beds, six beds, still a lot of bedrooms.
Sure is.
Is it?
Six beds, yeah.
Three and three?
Well, it's three and two, isn't it? Where did we get eight?
No, it's two down the basement.
Yeah, I know, it was three and two, did we calculate?
Add, add the next one up.
It was supposed to be four on the first, two on the second.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Right, right. And now there's gonna be three in the first, correct?
Well, I guess the.
Four is existing.
First floor is unchanged yet, so it's just on the second floor, it'll be an additional one.
Two bedrooms.
Yep.
Alright, just so we know, we're all talking about when people speak, right?
Do we?
Okay, sometimes. You can have a seat. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor, we're talking about six bedrooms now, he's adding, he's adding really two bedrooms on the, on the addition.
Second floor, second floor addition.
Second floor, right, two bedrooms. Anyone want to speak in favor, first call, second call, third call closed, I have a letter here from DPW, they reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed, I'll be voting in favor with just no bedrooms in the basement.
I'm, I'm saying, I, I think it's a, I think, I've watched them improve the condition of the house, I think they've done a really good job. I would love to, you know, give them everything they want, but that's just too many bedrooms, so, I'd say, open floor plan in the basement, I'm good.
Agreed.
Same here.
Yep. Have a motion, please?
ZBA twenty-three dash thirty, JCBT Architect for a variance to construct an addition on the existing second floor and finish the basement on the premise number six fifty-seven Quincy Shore Drive Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance with six total bedrooms.
Six total bedrooms and unfinished, and just.
And an unfinished open.
Just an open floor plan in the basement, which will be put on the deed. Second?
Second.
On the motion, yeah, we, right after this. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, some move. Twenty-three, thirty-three, James McCarthy for variance to construct a new two-story, two-car garage on the existing foundation wall with a pool house on the second floor on the premise number ninety Badcock. Mr. McCarthy, how are you tonight?
Great, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Jim McCarthy, I reside at ninety Badcock Street, that's the property I'm looking to do this garage on. I'm proposing to construct a two-story garage with a pool, changing room, and pool cabana above. So I'm looking for setbacks for the front setback, as well as a height setback, restriction request.
What's the height on it?
The height is twenty-two feet, ten inches from the street level.
It comes down a little bit there.
Right, I'm set up on like a three-and-a-half, four-foot grade, wall like that.
Go ahead, sorry to interrupt.
So I'm looking.
So I'm looking to construct this over the existing driveway, which is built into the lot. Originally, this was two house lots that went from Babcock Street to Manitav. We bought the property subdivided at Manitav, has their own house, and this one we retained for our house for a pool back in 1990s. My father built a garage foundation there for parking and hasn't done anything with it since. So I bought the house in 2010, haven't done anything with it until now. And finally, kids are growing up, they're out of the house, I can afford to build something. Yeah, so I'm really looking for a place to entertain. Hoping for grandkids someday and want a little bit more than just a pool in the yard.
You know, we tend to just drop them off right there, you know?
They're too old to drop, they're too old to drop off. I'm just worried they're gonna try to drop me off somewhere.
So, whoever, what's gonna be upstairs?
So. Upstairs is, well, it's basically one big room with a, a bathroom, a shower, and a toilet. In the room, there'll be a wet bar on the opposing wall of the bathroom, and that's pretty much it. There's area for seating, pool table in the front. Yeah, nothing, no walls except for the bathroom.
Just wide open, something like that.
No bedroom.
No bedroom.
Yeah.
One big giant room.
Yep, perfect.
One big giant room. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Huh? All right, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wanna speak in favor?
I do.
John Ruffels, Sturgard Mall Road. I always speak in favor of building a bumpy garage, so I like this plan. This is good space. I've, I think I've been in that backyard before, so I hope after you finish, I might get invited to that wet box, but I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Is there anyone else wanna speak in favor?
You just wanna be a pool boy, John.
Second call, third call? All the party here and close. I have a letter here from DPW. They reviewed the above project and have no comment. Is there anyone opposed to run aside? Mark Ford, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Glenn Vrebel. I live at 89 Babcock Street. I also own the house at 85 Babcock Street. This is directly across the street from Mr. McCarthy's.
Hmm.
I've lived there for 39 years. I went to high school at my mother's house next door, which I own now. I've had a beautiful water view that I love every day. And I know you guys, it's not important to you, but it's really important to me. 39 years, grew up my family there. It's just a shame that it's, this garage is gonna overtake my whole view. And I know that's not a, like I said, important to most people, but to me it is. That's my number one. Also, it's gonna bring his property value up, mine down, because the other reason is, I think that this garage, too close to the street, is gonna be, look totally obnoxious in this tight neighborhood. It's gonna be, instead of me looking at a view in a driveway, I'm looking at this monster's building, you know? I think it's just gonna, like I said, it's gonna look obnoxious, out of place. I was always curious about the setback from the street. This looks like it's gonna be three feet from the sidewalk, obnoxious to me. Nothing against South Boston or Dorchester, but we're Quincy, we're Howes Neck. Not good. The last thing is, to me, it's a lot of kids in the neighborhood. You see them riding bikes, people walking dogs. I have a work van in my driveway. I don't have a garage, and I have enough spots for three or four cars. And I have a hard time sometimes pulling out of my driveway on a safety issue because I get a look, pull out a little bit, look, next you don't cock them flying by, and I'm like, whoa, you know? I can't see how he's got a big pickup truck. I can't see how he's gonna be able to pull out of that safety. Like I said, kids ride, little kids riding bikes, not paying attention. People walking, their dogs talking with earbuds on. And I just can't see if it's hard for me in my driveway. To me, that's a major safety issue for a small neighborhood with a lot of kids, a lot of people. I guess that's it. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
They do have those mirrors you can put up so you can look and see. Probably a good idea, counselor?
Yeah. Dave McCarthy, Woodland Counsel, 48 Whitney Road. I, I agree about the view thing that we hear all the time, but it is what it is. And I, I've been down there a couple of times with Jim, looking at the property. There's a lot of properties in Howes Neck that have garages that are close to the street. And all the streets are pretty tight. I think that this is a plus in regards to utilizing space for his pool, but also getting his vehicles off the street. You know, Babcock is, all those streets, there's a lot of street parking. And I think this is a plus that he'll be able to garage his truck and another vehicle and get it off the street, and that'll help down there. So I think it's, it's a good project, and I support it.
Thank you, counselor. Last call? All the party here and close. Any comments from anybody?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've been rejecting anything with water and toilets and, and living quarters above garages. We just, we just put them down twice in Swan. And I think we're gonna set a tough precedent if we end up renting one to you.
What, what about a wet bar? What about a wet bar? I mean, it's gonna be an entertainment room like for his, for his pool. A wet bar, no shower. So there's only, there's only gonna have an inch and a half drain. So that's gonna be no shower if you take the shower. How would they get a wet bar in a place to go to the bathroom?
Yeah, I, again, we, I think one of them, we allowed a toilet, right?
We allowed the toilet and a wet, and a sink. Toilet and sink, no, no shower.
No showers.
No showers. Because then it's a bed, then they can just turn it into a rental.
There's been three of them we already rejected. We've already said no, it's pre-aidated, not a, not a fresh shot drops.
Yeah.
We did the one on top of wet, uh.
But we, the guy in Swan, we let, let through the, the wet bar and the toilet, right? And, and something like that doesn't bother me. As long as the drain pipe is small enough, you can't, you, you just, I mean, it's in his deed. There's no shower in that place, and it can't be rented. God forbid, if he ever did, something happened, it's over.
We're doing outdoor showers.
He'd be doing 10, 15 years, you know, so. In the big house.
10, 15?
Yeah. Good lawyer, you're 15. But what about just a wet bar for the pool and a toilet?
I think we're, I think we approved in Swan, right?
Yeah, the shower, I get, I get the shower part, I get it. I get it. You know, you don't need a shower because.
Is there another one down the, down the neck that we did too?
I might have missed that one, but I know we did the top of Swan, right off of, right off of. Right off of Bellevue. Yeah, Bellevue, Corner Bellevue and built.
Right, where the guy put in that.
Bellevue and Wedwood, I think it would be an outdoor shower.
And one comment I made, Jim, you know those, those signs, the, the mirrors that they make? Really? I mean, don't take a lot to put a little mirror up and take a look and see what's coming either way when you're coming out of the garage. I'll be voting in favor. Instincts to that guy, I know what he feels like. You know what, I just approved the house in front of my house, so.
I.
And took out my old, pedicure arms gone, like, well, it's not all gone, but nine cents.
Second time, and you know, Mr. Counsel McCarthy's probably got some zoning questions coming up in, in terms of revamping the map at some point or revamping the rules, but that's another one. You know, we, we don't, the water view is only given to the person in front of the water. That's the way we've treated it since I've been here, so. I, I sympathize with you. I'm, I'm 100 yards from the water myself, and I've seen people build right in front of me. So I wish I could, you know, make a decision based on that, but precedence has been set, and, and that's the way the rules work. So unfortunately, I'm not gonna worry about the water, and I apologize to you, sir. But I, I will be in favor based on, I think it's a decent project.
I'll be in favor as well. I think Mr. McCarthy, as a first responder for many, many years, the city of Quincy will be a careful driver while backing up.
So with the caveats of the bathroom, the walk-in wall.
Yeah, no, no.
I'll be in favor with.
No shower.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 23-33, James McCarthy for variance to construct a new two-story, two-car garage on the existing foundation wall with a pool house on the second level of the premise number 90 Babcock Street Quincy, with the exception of no shower. So just a toilet, a small sink, and a wet bar. Make a motion.
Small drain pipe, just, just for the bathroom.
Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Aye.
Further on tonight's agenda, ZBA 23-36, Brian Bernard for variance to construct a new two-story garage on the side of the home on the front of 41 Cranche Street.
Brian Bernard, 41 Cranche Street. Not unlike the previous applicant, I'm hoping to build a two-story garage, 16 by 36, which should give us tandem parking for winter time when we have crazy storms. That's kinda what I'm thinking in that. Upstairs, we've got three little kids. We wanna do basically a playroom, an open playroom. There's a couple of variants that we have to apply for. Setback on the left side, height, because it's two-story. And it's gonna be attached to the house. It's going through zone as an accessory dwelling building.
Now. There's no way to get into that second floor from the house, correct?
No, yeah, from outside, it will be down our deck and then a door through the garage and then a stairway in the corner of the first floor.
Right, but you, you just can't walk into the second floor?
No, no.
Why?
Uh, we, we did an addition six years ago, and our kitchen runs all along that left wall, so there's really no refrigerator and cabinets.
Funny, there's things you could do, but I don't want to spend money. I just don't understand. So what do you have upstairs in the, in the, in the, in the second floor?
Uh, just a kid's game room, same thing, pool table, couch, maybe a TV.
No water, no nothing?
No, no water.
Oh. Never mind. I thought you were going in there to like, you know, the kids have a bath or have a bath or something.
No.
So you're just, you're just gonna have a playroom on the second floor?
Yeah.
Which, you know. Who's building it?
No, I'm a contractor.
Okay.
Yeah, for you.
All right. I, I have no questions.
I have none.
No questions.
No questions.
You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wanna speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I have a letter here from DPW. They have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Anyone opposed to run aside? First call, second call, third call closed. I'll be voting in favor.
In favor?
In favor.
Brian Bernard for variance to construct a new two-story garage on the side of the home on the premise number 41 Cranche Street Quincy and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further on tonight, JBC for variance to build a two and a half, no, that's moved.
No, this one.
Yep.
22-39.
For variance, finding to construct an addition on the existing second floor